My microphone is on, right? Welcome. Welcome to all of you to this forum. Am I going to get an echo like that?
If I can get closer to the microphone at all?
I can get closer to, I can eat the mic if you want me to. Welcome. Ah, now I, that's better. Welcome all of you to this forum for the Menominee School Board candidates. Thank you for coming. I am Ellen Oaks, President of the League of Women Voters of the Greater Chippewa Valley. We are all volunteers and, like many volunteer organizations, we could use some more. Just talk to some of those people out at the table that you passed when you came in. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan and political. And by that we mean, we don't support individual candidates or parties, but we do. We are committed to protecting your voting rights locally, statewide, and nationally. We work hard to bring you information in the candidates' own words, as in this forum, and on the website vote411.org. If you picked up a pen out there as you came in, that has vote41.org on it to remind you. This resource is available now for statewide races and local races in time for the spring election on April 1st. We invite candidates to submit their information in their own words. Some candidates may not have posted, and if you see one of those candidates that didn't post, and you have a way of communicating with that candidate, encourage him or her to put his own words or her own words on that resource because that way you can see what they stand for in their words. I want to thank our sponsors for tonight, the Menominee Area Chamber of Commerce and Eye on Dunn County. And I want to thank our Vice President, Steve Hansen. He's the Vice President of League of Women Voters of Greater Chippewa Valley. You see, men can join the league too. And he is publisher of Eye on Dunn County, and he's a videographer. He tells me this will be livestreamed on the Facebook League website and also on Eye on Dunn County. Or you may view it later on our League website, l w v hyphen g c b dot o r g. And thank you, all you candidates, for your willingness to participate and your interest in serving our community. We are glad to actually get to see you in the flesh today. Those of you who have cellphones with you, which is pretty much everybody, could you make sure that they won't interrupt, in whatever way you do that? Here are the rules for this evening. Lots were drawn ahead of time for the candidate's speaking order. And we have them now seated according to the numbers, one through five. One is at this end of the tables, five at that end. So number one will go first for opening statement. At closing, it will be the reverse order. And as we work through the questions, we will kind of mix it up. The candidates will make opening and closing statements of up to three minutes in length. Is that right?
That's what we were told.
Right. All candidates will have an opportunity to respond to all questions. Answers for questions will be limited to two minutes. We have a timer. Sarah Cardwell, put your hand up. She has a sign that will show you if you have 30 seconds left and when you should stop. Index cards for questions are available. If you didn't get one when you came in, you can, there will be someone walking around that you can get a card from, those of you in the audience, if you think of a question you want to ask. We all want as broad an exchange as possible with different variety of questions. Our screeners have been working to put them in categories, and they'll be feeding them to me, and I'll be reading them. Simple arithmetic will tell you each question may take as much as 10 minutes, if each candidate uses two minutes to answer it. We don't want to be here till midnight, so we are limited to a relatively small number of questions, but I think it'll be a good field. So now it is my pleasure to introduce you to the candidates, and the first candidate will introduce herself to you, Dominique Stewart.
Where's my opening statement?
Your turn.
Cool, thanks. Hi, my name is Dominique Stewart. I am currently on the school board, and I am running for reelection. Previous to being on the school board, I received my Bachelor of Science in Music Education and was an elementary music teacher at River Heights Elementary. I loved so many parts of that job. I loved the students, I loved the teachers that I worked with, and when I left that job, I was looking for a way to continue to support all of the people that I had met and connections I'd made while I was a teacher, and so that was when I decided to run for school board the first time. I think that some of the skills and attributes that I bring as a member to the school board is my ability to ask thoughtful, direct questions, to engage in conversation in a way that is productive and respectful of all my fellow board members. And I am running for reelection because I would like to continue that work. I still have connections in the district. I love seeing all the progress we've made, and I have goals and hopes and just a desire to continue to be a part of that process. Thank you.
Rachel?
All right. Thank you. I'm Rachel Henderson. I'm also running to serve a second term on the school board here in Menominee. I'm a local farmer, and I have two kids in the Menominee School District. A week or so ago, I was making dinner, and I was running late. And then my younger son, who's now eight, came up, and he asked me if I wanted to go outside and watch the sunset with him. And my first thought was, actually, no, I don't want to go watch the sunset because I want to finish making dinner, I'm running late, I'm chopping veggies, and I have a pan heating up. But I caught myself before I said that because it was a gorgeous day, and who knows how much longer this kid is going to ask me to go out and watch the sunset. So we stood out there, I turned off the pan, I left the veggies on the cutting board, and we went outside to watch the sunset. And dinner was fine, and we all made it through the night. I think about this story because, as a parent, we want our kids, we want to care for our kids, and we want to meet all of their basic needs. But we also want to encourage them to be part of the world and to be by their side as they experience it. As community members, we also want that in our schools. We want our students to learn to read and do math, to become literate in technology, to interpret history and current events, but we also want them to become thoughtful and engaged citizens of the world. And to me, as a board member, I think those things are not intention. Our thoughtful and engaged students are going to get more out of their reading, and they're going to be better able to apply the skills that they learn in math and science. As a school board member, that's a top priority for me. As we wade through our budget decisions and curriculum changes, I want to keep being mindful that schools are places where our young people learn to experience, and we're responsible for making sure those spaces continue to exist for those experiences to happen. Prior to joining the school board, I had a lot of experience in governance of nonprofits. I served on nonprofit boards and co-op boards, and I think I was able to bring a lot of that governance leadership to the school board. I've learned a lot in the last three years. I got a crash course in school finance, and I'm really excited to be able to continue to bring that work to the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel Henderson. Joyce Euler?
Thank you to all the hosts and attendees tonight. My name is Joyce Euler, and if elected, I will strive for safer schools, parental rights, and academics over agendas. Joyce is your voice. And now that we got that out of the way, I would like to tell you that I have really agonized over what to say tonight, and I had lots of advisors. Joyce, you sound too liberal. Joyce, you sound too conservative. Joyce, you weren't going to wear that, are you? So please put all that aside. I am just a simple Menomineeite, a homeschool mom at heart. I've been attending these school board meetings for five years now, trying to make sense of things. I've done my homework researching some of the agendas that I think are getting in the way of learning. I have blogged about these concerns at MenomineeMatters.substack.com for years and shared my concerns and findings a number of times with the board. They have been completely unresponsive. When they started moving to shut down public comment last fall, I knew the choice was run for school board or be completely silenced. You know, when I go to the hairdresser or just around town, I hear stories about student-on-student violence in our schools, and these stories do not seem to have a happy ending. If the victims got satisfaction and justice, the hairdressers don't seem to know about it. If these stories are true, this district has a discipline and a safety problem. If these stories are false, the school district has a communication problem. As part of my campaign's listening process, I heard that many people are happy with the schools. Several middle school boys recently have said that they are happy. I ask, do you feel safe? They say, yes. I say, what do you like about school? They say they like their teachers. Excellent. Still, every year, Wisconsin publishes the school report cards, and 60%, six zero, of all students in the SDMA are not proficient in English and math. Only 40% of our students are academically on target. Why is this never discussed at school board meetings? Why does the community allow this to continue? So anyway, 40% of the district is a success story, and 60% needs a voice. To the people who have not gotten satisfaction for your concerns, I will listen, I will try to help. Joyce is your voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Abe Smith?
Thank you to the League for putting us together and to the high school staff for hosting us. My name is Abe Smith. I have served one year as Board Clerk and two years as Board Vice President on the Menominee School Board. In these roles, I have worked constantly to make sure I understand the details of how our schools operate, doing everything I can to make sure our public schools are the very best they can be for every single student. There are three things I want everyone to understand about public schools. Number one, public schools serve every kid, no matter what. It doesn't matter who the kid's parents are, how much money they make, how much food they have at home, what language they speak, what religion they follow or don't, or if they have medical or learning challenges that require special individual care. It doesn't matter if they live in a farmhouse, or a suburban home, or an apartment building, or if they're experiencing homelessness. If a child shows up, our teachers welcome them and provide the best education we possibly can. Number two, in a small town like Menominee, the public schools are the center of our community and drive its future. Families and businesses move to or from Menominee based on the quality and reputation of our schools. The economic and social future of Menominee is tied to whether the school board makes thoughtful and wise decisions. Number three, schools are made of people, and many of them are here. The way we support students and improve educational outcomes is to make sure Menominee Area Schools are a great place for excellent teachers and staff to build long-term careers. We need to continue to retain and recruit highly talented and highly trained employees and make sure they have the resources they need to serve our kids. Our teachers and staff are also parents and neighbors and customers and business owners throughout the community, and if we invest in them, we invest in ourselves and our own future in our town. The school board is facing very serious and difficult problems right now. Our district has an extremely tight budget due to the legislature giving us the lowest revenue per student in the entire state. We have academic areas where improvement is desperately needed. We have buildings and facilities that need maintenance, which we can no longer afford to keep up. There's a teacher shortage. Enrollment numbers and class sizes are difficult to predict. I take all these problems extremely seriously, and I recognize the daily experience of each of our kids, and the future of our entire community depends on the board working collaboratively together to make sure we have great staff with reliable resources to face these challenges. Thank you.
Thank you, Abe Smith. And Josie Pillman?
Hi, and thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Eye on Dunn County, and greetings to fellow candidates and the audience. My name is Josie Pillman. So who am I and where did I come from? I was born and raised in Lloydminster, an Alberta Saskatchewan border city in Canada. I am now an American citizen. I'm a Christian. My husband and I were missionaries in Ecuador, South America, for nine years. We had four children born in Ecuador. One son died as an infant and is buried there. On our return to the Midwest, we had three more children, and our last son died as an infant and is buried outside of Menominee. We have six living children, five sons and one daughter. We began homeschooling them in Ecuador and continued in the States through grade 12. All six are now ages eight to, I'm sorry, age 31 to 43. They have maintained their Christian worldview into their adult life. All are married and have given us 24 grandchildren so far. The next generation is also being homeschooled. So what compelled me to run for school board? Although we moved into the Menominee area in 1994, I did not become involved in attending school board meetings and evaluating books and curriculum until just after COVID, when I moved to Nap. I love children, all children, and I am aware of how important it is to lay solid educational foundations based on truth, to maintain healthy families in our community. This education starts well before school age, but our schools begin at about K4, and teachers have a serious responsibility to teach our children. With permission, I was allowed to browse around the Nap Elementary School library. I was alarmed. One book I found is titled, "It Feels Good to Be Yourself." Here is just one quote from the book. Quote, "When Alex was born, everyone thought Alex was a girl, but Alex is both boy and girl. This is Alex's gender identity," unquote. This book is completely full of lies. I began to attend school board meetings and to make public comments. You only have three minutes, as you may know. I also began to dig into the policies and rules and to talk to some of the teachers and support staff. I learned that I could ask the school district to reconsider having this book in the library. I worked through that process, and the reconsideration committee of nine voted nine to zero to keep the book in. One day in Nap Elementary, I was looking at their bulletin boards. I saw all kinds of rainbows. These were not rainbows with a Noah's Ark under them. They were messaging these little children, more lies about human sexuality. There is nothing to be proud about when a child proclaims he is LGBTQ+. These are sexual sins. Our schools must reclaim. Okay, I'm supposed to stop, so that's the truth. We could tell the truth about rainbows.
Thank you, Josie Pillman. Okay, I'm going to start with the questions now, and I am going to start with Dominique first, just because it's easier for me to keep track if I start with number one rather than number two. But this is a question that any of you can answer. What are examples of the Menominee schools' best achievements, and what would be a priority for improvement? Dominique?
Well, I think it's hard to choose our best achievement because fortunately, at the board level, we get a highlight on youth every month. I'm a little biased, but I think one of our best achievements is the musicals that we put on every year. It is a special and unique thing that's like highly collaborative, and so I love seeing all of kids from all different sports and activities coming together to put on something that the community can enjoy. So we most recently did Freaky Friday, but that's something that happens every year that is put on by a lot of people who volunteer a lot of time, which is really cool. I think something else that is really special about Menominee and one of our best features is that, obviously, I am a little biased about the arts, but there is a niche for each student. So if you don't, the arts on everything, we have a wide variety of sports to get into. We have a wide variety of, not extracurriculars, but I lose the word, but you could get into tech ed, you could do 2D or 3D art, you could get into agriculture, which is especially important for this community. So I think we do a nice job of offering a wide variety of things to our students. One of the areas that I would like to continue to work on is supporting our teachers and our staff and thereby our students to increase our state report cards. I feel like we are doing that. We have some good plans set in place, and my goal is to continue to collaborate with teachers because I trust our teachers, that they know what they need in order to help continue to improve in that area.
Thank you, Dominique Stewart. Rachel Henderson?
Yeah, Dominique alluded to this, but one of my favorite things every month is hearing from our student council representatives at the school board. They come and they talk about things that have happened. They're very, that's focused on the high school, but it blows my mind, actually, every single month, the things that we hear from them about what our students are engaged in. And I think it's amazing to know, I think Menominee stands out in the opportunities that are available, but also in that level of engagement, I think is incredible. On an academic level, I think we've seen a lot happening this year with the implementation of Act 20, and I think one way, when I talk to people from other schools, one way that Menominee stands out to me is the instructional model that we have going on in our schools that really helped us be ready for Act 20 this year. We've got instructional coaches, we've got interventionists, we've got specialists in every one of our buildings who are there to support the teachers, who are there to support the students who need extra work, or need extra help. And I think we really have the ability to reach students on an individual level with whatever it is they're struggling with, and I think that's something I'm really proud of in Menominee.
Thank you, Rachel Henderson. Joyce Euler?
When you ask somebody what they like about the schools, they say the extracurricular activities, or they say their teachers. It's a standard response. I live kind of close to this high school, and I have been really amazed at, you drive by, and there's always cars here. There's, this is a very vibrant school system, and the summer school program as well is really very exciting. I was practicing various questions people might ask, and there was a question about gifted and talented students, and I like to go back to the 40% of the students that are academically succeeding. And I thought to myself, in this district, the people who, you know, are making the grade, there are some fabulous opportunities for them, like the Science Olympiad, some really technical things and opportunities to get involved with, starting maybe some college and some technical education, that sort of thing. And so I think that we're really good to the 40%, and I think that the challenge the school board has is, what can we do for the 60%? Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce Euler. Abe Smith?
I agree with pretty much everything that's been said so far. I think those are excellent points. I want to reiterate, you know, Science Olympiad is phenomenal, and our teams are dozens and dozens of students across the middle school and the high school crushing it in competitions across the Midwest. It is amazing. Likewise, there's the Future Business Leaders of America, FPLA, the 4H Groups, just tons of activities going on in our schools. It's astounding. So I do want to say that. But there's something I want to mention which people haven't mentioned yet, so it's worth emphasizing, and also, those of you who, you know, knew me a few years ago may be surprised at this response, but I am deeply impressed by the organizational structure within the administration of this district. We've had a situation where there's lots of challenges we have to face, and I keep seeing teams come together with an all-hands-on-deck approach to solve problems thoroughly, to think them through, to talk with the right people, to get data and bring it together and synthesize it, and then come up with a solution which works. And that is, I mean, I've seen universities, I've seen large businesses, I've seen small businesses. Management that thorough and inclusive is really great.
Thank you, Abe Smith. Josie Pillman?
I really appreciate hearing a lot of what we just heard and some of those things I wasn't aware of. One thing I've noticed that the schools have done in the last, I'm not sure, this year at least, is that they have taken cellphones away from the students during class time hours. I don't know exactly how they do that, but I think that it's been a really good thing. They've also done some things with, in the study hour, study time, to try to make it more, not just you can go in there and play games, but to actually help kids that might need extra tutoring in math. And I can agree with Abe too on, I think that the administration here does a really good job and is very forward-looking on some of the budget and some of those kind of challenges that come up. So then I go back to what can we do to improve things? And as you've already gathered, I'm very concerned about character, character building, order in the classroom, and morals. So I'm concerned that teachers who may have a very strong moral compass are being limited in how they can express that to the students. The gender policy plan here is not good. It's wicked, and it's actually dangerous. And I think that some things need to be done. It needs to be addressed, it needs to be changed, and it very shortly may be actually illegal, and so then there could be lawsuits coming up. So in order for kids to learn academically, they need to have sound foundations in the earliest grades, so that would be, that would be a priority for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie Pillman. This next question, I'm going to start with Rachel Henderson and move down the line in that direction, and Dominique Stewart will get the last answer this time. So this is a question about funding. I'm sorry. I can't always tell when I'm on the microphone. And I have to be able to see the cards, too. This is a question about funding. As the state legislature continues to provide less funding to public schools each year, what is your stance on vouchers? Rachel?
Thank you for the question. That's actually not where I thought you were going. Sorry. You know, I think that it's up to families to make decisions about where they want to send their students for school, and there's a lot of options available to people. Ultimately, I think public money should go to public schools. I think that vouchers are, as we have seen from their implementation, they're often being used by people who are already using the private school system, so I don't think they make educational opportunity more equitable in the state, and I think they detract from our public schools. So I guess very simply, I think public money for public schools.
Thank you, Rachel. Joyce Euler?
I'd like to start by saying that this is not something that school board members have really any say in whatsoever. You know, and I know that people have some really hard feelings about how the money is given, distributed by the state between, you know, the, say, the private choice schools and the school district. I don't have a strong opinion about that, but I will say this because I was a homeschooler, and, you know, homeschoolers do that for free. So homeschoolers are paying our taxes into the state, and we're not getting anything back. We're educating your kids, we're educating everybody's kids. And so I just want to throw that out. Now, homeschoolers actually don't necessarily want to get money from the state because then the state can make demands on them, and that could be, that could become a problem. And so I guess that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Abe Smith?
Thanks. I agree with what Rachel said about public dollars remaining and public institutions. I think there's something about this which is about transparency of how public dollars are spent. There's lots of discussion now about, you know, is our government spending our money the way we want them to? Is there, you know, is there waste, fraud, and abuse, as the phrase used to be? And I think that in the case of the voucher programs, you have dollars that are being Uh, and I think that in the case of the voucher programs, you have dollars that are being pulled into private institutions and those institutions don't have the same amount of oversight. They don't have transparency, they don't have the same hiring practices necessarily in terms of licensing. Um, they don't have to go through the same state assessments that we do. And so you have a large amount of dollars coming through the tax system, which from the taxpayer's perspective, basically disappear, um, with no accountability. And that is, I think, as a taxpayer, a deeply disturbing thing. I think it is true that, you know, there is many ways of educating children. Uh, the thing that's unique about public schools, as I said in my opening statement, is that they, we, the public schools serve every kid no matter what. So there are certainly families who are fantastic at homeschooling, who have great systems in place, lots of support, um, but maybe those kids want to, you know, uh, join Science Olympiad, maybe they want to do some of their activity. There's, we will always let them in. The public schools will always say, yes, we're happy to have you, we're here to support you if you need something. Um, so that's what I have to say.
Thank you Abe Smith. Josie Pillman?
So I take a little bit different take on this. Um, I would see vouchers as true vouchers. So if you wanted to send your kid to the public school down the road, you'd take your money and give it, they, and give it to them and send your child to that public school. Um, if you wanted to take them, your money and go to a private school that had maybe a few less things or maybe a few more things, you'd take it there. I, I'm a believer in true voucher programs and I think that the competition would be natural then, so that it would help the pro, public schools to up their academic levels and up their things because they wanted to, they wanted to get the children. I think that a true voucher program would, um, increase competition and it would help all around, the private schools as well.
Thank you Josie Pillman. Dominique Stewart?
I will also echo that I think public dollars should stay in public schools. Um, the point, one of the points Abe raised is interesting in the idea of our taxes being pulled from everyone, but not every child can go to every private school. And so, and there's no accountability when that money gets sent, that they're meeting certain standards, that they're providing certain services. And so for me, it's important that our tax dollars stay in our public schools. Um, because, because like I said, we serve all students regardless of where they come from, regardless of what they worship or not, we take them all, and that is not the case with every private school.
Thank you Dominique Stewart. So now I'll start with Joyce Ulller. I'm just taking these in the order that I'm holding them. I am! There have been several challenges of library books in the school system over the past few years. Can you explain your viewpoint on books used in libraries and curriculum? And how this affects critical thinking skills of the children?
I don't know how it affects critical thinking skills of the children. I do actually have a plan for library books because I have complained about them. Um, and I, and I'll be complaining about them again later, but, um, I think that as a district, there, there are, um, people who have done reviews of books where they've compared them to actual, um, movie ratings objectively. And I think that we should be able to agree that to remove the NC-17 and the X-rated books from the entire district, and yeah, we have them. And that we should remove the R-rated, R-rated books from the elementary schools. I don't think that's a big ask. And then I think that parents should be notified whenever their kid checks out anything. So parents have responsibility, okay, um, in addition to the parental rights that I would fight for. They have, they have the rights, but you have to empower them. So you give them the name of that book and then it's the parent's job to look it up. Um, also, there is an issue with Sora. I don't, I haven't really talked much to you guys about that, but Sora is a digital, um, book service that has some extremely sexually explicit materials in it, and it's a public-private partnership which is covered by a password. And so while the rest of the school books are transparent, that, um, Sora is not. I think it should go. Thank you.
Thank you Joyce. Next up is Abe Smith.
So it's certainly true that not every book is appropriate for every kid at every moment, but we need a thorough library where every kid can find what they need at that moment when they need it. That can involve, you know, consultation with their parents, their teachers, their librarians. And in particular, I think, you know, when these book challenges happen, it's important to realize they happen through a process where it undergoes library review, consultation with teachers and staff, who are professionals studying childhood development, just studying, you know, knowing what's age appropriate for that child in those classrooms, um, in that environment, and then goes to a panel involving both professional staff and, uh, local citizens, thinking through and deciding if this is appropriate for our school or not. We have a very thorough process to, to, to validate things. And at least in the challenges I'm aware of, those, you know, that process has been unanimous in saying, um, our library should have these books and our, you know, teachers and staff are well-trained and know how to guide students to the material that's appropriate for them at that moment.
Thank you Abe Smith. Next up is Josie Pillman?
Well, I'm pretty passionate about this and it's not just about being age appropriate, but I think, um, the illustration that Abe give, gives demonstrates exactly the point. Like this book to a child who's a non-reader or an early reader, children in their learning, um, they don't have discernment at the start. Anything their authority tells them is right. And we should not be teaching children lies when they don't even know it's a lie. Um, especially when it comes to human sexuality. And even when we get up into the higher levels, every child does not have to have access to everything. So these books should never even be put in the library in the first place. And so we're being told that the professionals know better than the parents. The, the parents are very intimidated. When I took this book out of the library in Nap, I was told by Dr. Zdowski that no one in the eight years that he had been here had challenged one book in the library. No parent, no pastor, no community member. So there's something wrong with the process and I think that the parents, whether they're uneducated or intimidated, professionals don't know better than the parents. So I think it's a really big problem right now.
Thank you Josie Pillman. Next person is Dominique Stewart.
I love reading and, um, I grew up in this district and chose a lot of books, uh, in this district. And I think that reading is very important to developing critical thinking skills, which is, um, one part of the question. And even in my background, you know, I'm a licensed music educator and yet even I can say our classroom teachers and our librarians would far better be able to answer that question of specifically how book reading can improve our critical readings, critical thinking skills. Now, um, reading overall helps. I think sometimes maybe we're a, a little too literal about, I don't know, book reading because there are so many different stories, genres you can get that expand your world. They show you things that you don't have in your own life. Like it could be about dragons, it could be about how a literal train works, it could be anything. And the purpose of a book is not to just take what it is and believe it as truth, it's to expand your mind and your thinking. And I gotta apologize to my parents because they're here tonight and I gotta tell a personal story, but I am very grateful because, uh, my family is very religious and very spiritual and growing up, there is a certain book series with a wizard in it, that my mom didn't really want me to read. Um, but she didn't stop me. And I didn't grow up thinking that now I'm a wizard, Harry, you know, like, but I was able to explore that series and be able to talk about it with my peers. And it was a really special thing that my family allowed for me. And that is the point of our libraries, is that every kid and their family has a choice. And if you really strongly believe that your kid shouldn't be reading stuff, there are avenues in our district to help navigate that, but it doesn't mean we should take things away from all of their students.
Thank you Dominique Stewart. Rachel, Rachel Henderson?
Last year, one of my kids got into an elementary kids book series. I think it's called I Survived. So there's I Survived the Titanic, I Survived the Great Depression. I thought they were all, they are all historical. And then one day my son brought home I Survived 9/11. And I was like, wow, I didn't know that was out here yet. Um, and he was not really clear on what was fact and fiction in these series, is, is what I kind of learned in talking to him about it. And we had a really hard conversation about what happened on 9/11 and why and how it affected people and that it was real. And, you know, compared to the, you know, compared to the depression, it was just so much more recent and so much more, uh, it was so much harder for me to talk about with him. And I had to talk about it at 4:30 on a Tuesday afternoon because, you know, I'm not a time that, of my choosing. And, um, I also have a tween, an adolescent, and I live in, as a mom, live in terror of the days we start talking about sex and, but I know I have to do that. That's my job as a parent, is, our job as parents is to have those hard conversations and they're hard and they're miserable and I wish I could schedule them. I wish I could make them when I want and I can't. Um, so I think it is our role as parents to have those difficult conversations and to help our children confront things that are hard to learn about, to be there for them and to make them less scared. Um, and the job of the district is to make sure that we pro, follow a process that's outlined in our policies about what kinds of books should be in the district and who we trust to make those decisions. And, and outside of that, we should not be micromanaging. So, thank you.
Thank you Rachel Henderson. Next round of questions. Student advocacy. The School District of Menominee's mission statement includes this quote, "Is dedicated to preparing all students to become lifelong learners." Unquote. As a school board member, how, how will you advocate for all students in our district? And first person to speak on this question will be Abe Smith.
Well, I think this is one of the greatest challenges we face, is making sure that our schools are genuinely open to every student who comes in the door. And when I see the interaction our staff have when we, as a school board, when we have our reports about student behavior, about, about test results, about, um, interventions that have been made, about the food program, about all these different programs, the question we're always asking is, are we doing the best we possibly can to serve every student? And that becomes a cultural, it permeates the entire culture of every staff member, every lunch lady, every administrator is thinking through, are we meeting the needs of every student who comes in the door? And those needs are always different. And I think it's striking how different the needs can actually be and the flexibility it takes to actually set up a system where needs are identified, maybe through a stu, a school counselor who's doing reading assessments, maybe through intervention of math, maybe through, um, access to medical health care. So it really is about having a, building a comprehensive culture of always listening to parents, listening to students and making sure that teachers and the staff members who are with them on a daily basis are empowered to share ideas and bring those up through the administration.
Thank you Abe Smith. Josie Pillman?
Um, so this is preparing all students to be lifelong learners and, um, and it's about student advocacy. I think that one of the, the struggles and difficulties in our culture comes back from, um, a basic understanding of children, of the human being, that we are born bad and have to be trained to be good. I think we have amazing teachers in our schools, um, but they're often working under a handicap where they don't realize that the students are born bad and they need to be trained to be good. It's not the opposite. In many, in many institutions of higher learning, they're taught, it's their environment, they're born good and it's their environment that makes them bad. When you get that turned on its head, you're gonna, it's gonna be different, the way you train the children. So part of being a lifelong learner is about character and morals. You have to learn to be kind to the person next to you. You have to be, you have to learn, you have to be taught, take your turn at the water fountain. And I'm not saying that our teachers are bad at this, but some have a hard time getting it straight, so you're not gonna have proper classroom control. And when there's not proper classroom control, everybody suffers and doesn't learn. As you get up into the higher levels, it's different than a kid, a young kid. That's where you get the critical thinking. And that's where you get the understanding of how, um, how you should look at life, how you should look at morality, um, that, you know, none of this teaching that if you're a boy, you can become a girl if you feel like it. That is not this world. It is not moral and it's not gonna be good and kind for our students. That should not be taught in our schools. So for them to be a lifelong learner, they need to be moral.
Thank you Josie Pillman. Dominique Stewart?
I think, when I think back, uh, through my time as a teacher and these past three years as a school board member, me being an advocate for all students, uh, is always a response to getting to know my students and what they need. So I think it's staying open, I think maybe Abe was alluding to this, but communicating with students and staff, um, and not walking into, um, into the room with one set of ideas that will not change. As a teacher, getting to know my students, I had to address some of the songs I was doing, or I would turn some into different languages depending on what students were there. And when I think about looking, you know, ahead even five years as to what our students need, it doesn't always stay the same. Sometimes it changes. Uh, and so I think being flexible, being diligent about studying trends and reaching out to community and students helps me become a better advocate. One, um, of the ways that I can best think about supporting all of our students at the moment is advocating for more funding at the state legislature. So that's kind of what's on my mind in a very like tangible sense. But overall, I think in order to be an advocate, you have to be a listener and you have to trust that people know themselves and their needs better than you know for them.
Thank you Dominique. Rachel Henderson?
I've had, uh, the opportunity recently to really reflect on, um, some of the teachers and other school personnel that my two kids have been in contact with over the last seven years. Um, and think about the ways in which some of those folks, whether they were a classroom teacher, a lunch lady, a library assistant, school counselor, to think about some of the ways in which those, those, our staff have seen my kids for who they are, have valued them as people and for the like human being that comes into their room every day. And I see that not only what they've done for my children, right, but I know that they see that in every single kid. We have teachers, we have clerical workers, we have paraeducators, we have ladies, we have bus drivers, um, who see the human being in every single kid. And I think that, um, I think that happens in our classrooms and I'm so glad to see that in the Menominee schools. As a board member, I, you know, one of our biggest priority, or one of our biggest responsibilities as a board member is to oversee the policies. We set policies, we make sure our policies are relevant. And I think focusing on keeping our policies student-centered, keeping our policies that protect the rights and opportunities of every kid in our district, and to have policies that- that, within the legal framework we existed in the state of Wisconsin and the United States of America, that are always focused on what do kids need to learn, what do kids need to be safe in school, and making sure that we keep our policies protective and supportive of all of our students.
Thank you, Rachel. And Joyce Ulller.
Well, after listening to the four of you, now I know what that part of the mission statement means, means student advocacy. I honestly have had a problem with the mission statement, and so I didn't know what that even meant. I wish that the mission statement said something about academics, because I believe that that's what school districts are supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce Ulller. Next question. It's up my alley. And this would be, starting with Josie Pillman. Do you feel the School District of Menominee is providing good civics citizenship education?
I will have to say, I'm not totally clear of exactly what they are teaching.
Well, we live in the United States of America, and there is a certain amount of understanding that you need to have to know about things like voting.
Yeah. I am, I'm not sure if the general public is fully informed on some of things like that. So I know there are some civics classes that they take in the high school. I have looked a little bit at elementary school books that talk about the history of the United States, and I had some concern about some of the things written in there. So it, I have not dug into the curriculum or listened a lot, but I think that there's always room for improvement, and I don't wanna criticize too badly, but I'm not sure that the general flow of the everybody, not the civics classes, are fully informed about the system. It's complicated, as we all know. Elections come, even this, how to run for school board, what are all the things you have to do, how do you get your name on the school board, and when is the election? There's a lot of things. Then you go on your legislator. I just, I just can't imagine that they're covering everything that they could, but it's complicated. So I'm not gonna say I know for sure, but I appreciate that they're trying. I know they have a Constitution Day, and they teach certain things there, so I'm a little bit unsure how to answer that question.
Thank you, Josie Pillman. Dominique Stewart, do you have an answer for that question?
I do. I actually recently met our civics teacher and got to speak to the civics class, because they have brought in speakers from different levels of government, and also, it wasn't just an opportunity for me, it was presented to all school board members to go to the class. But it was the most amazing time of students asking questions, and the teacher guided some questions, and then she opened it up to the class. And the things that these kids came up with was, like, stuff that I've never thought about, right? Like, so in three years, if I could have anything funded I wanted, what would it be? Well, I haven't thought about that, 'cause we're on the other end of that spectrum, you know? Or, they actually specifically asked what the barriers are, what the process is for running for school board, and they were a little bit shocked to find out that you don't really have to have a background check to run, to be an elected official. So I think that our civics class is actually very strong. If I'm not mistaken, and I'm pretty sure someone down the line can correct me, but I'm pretty sure maybe our juniors have to take a civics test essentially, that I think would cover some of the basics about, that we're concerned about having. So I think our civics courses have really developed nicely, and I'm very excited that I got to see firsthand how students are able to engage with it.
Thank you, Dominique Stewart. Thank you, Dominique Stewart. Get right in front of this mic here. Rachel Henderson?
Yeah, I was really bummed to miss that visit to the civics class. It was originally scheduled for the cold day, I think, and then the reschedule, I was out of town, and I would've loved to participate. I had another opportunity to participate in something like a civics education. A couple of years ago, a student reached out to me for a class, debate class that he was preparing for, where they were instructed to reach out to live sources and not Google, to help them make sure that they were really bringing robust information to their debate, and had a, I had a great conversation with a high school student in that way. I agree with Dominique, I think that we have a great civics education for our high school students. I'd also say, you know, when we talk about things like how our election systems work, what are, what are levels of government, I even see in my elementary school and middle school students, in my kiddos, right, that they are learning the basics of those things at a, you know, age-appropriate, increasing levels of complexity. So I do think that our, I think our, we do a great job at teaching our kids about the world that they live in and how to engage with it. I think beyond electoral civics, I think we also have, you know, every year, my students have been, or my kids have had the opportunity to be involved in community service types of work, and I think our district does a lot of that, which is a big part, to me, of what it means to be a civic-minded person. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rachel Henderson. Joyce Ulller?
I'm glad to hear that we have a strong civics program. I really didn't know what we had, and I can't speak about it further. Thank you.
Okay. Abe Smith?
Yeah, from what I've seen, I am very impressed with the way we teach civics and social studies and all the related topics in SDMA. My daughter's in third grade at River Heights, and I remember back in the fall, they had a whole section of their curriculum in their kind of reading and writing segment about how presidential elections work. They even mentioned the Electoral College. They talked about what a president does in terms of the powers they do and don't have, what it means to have a law, what role Congress has versus the president. It was, it was amazingly thorough, and this is third grade, and their kids were writing descriptions and essays, you know, what they would do if they were president, and all kinds of, you know, the things you'd expect, but also, really, the details were spot-on. That was great. I also was there the day that Dominique and I presented the high school civics class a few weeks ago, back in January, I think it was. And again, the students had just phenomenal questions and insight into what, you know, they're asking, how many voters does it take, you know, to win this election or this election? They had previously had, I think, someone from county board and someone from city council come to class and talk about what the city government does, what does the county government do? And we're just very insightful about, about what's involved there. Something else I wanna mention is, we've talked about the extracurricular activities we have. One of our, you know, very successful clubs is the forensics club, right? If you don't know what forensics is, it's basically, you know, debate and discussion about topics that are, you know, given to you to do a speech or a presentation about something. And a lot of that is about, you know, business and government and negotiation, and all those things we think of as being a participant in the community. Thanks.
Thank you, Abe Smith. Okay, I'm looking at the time, it's eight o'clock, we have, probably have time to address two more questions. You see, I have five or six cards in my hand. And I'm trying to get that broad coverage of different questions for people. I'll be starting with Dominique again, as number one, answering for this. I hope you trust my judgment on this. We need different viewpoints for our school board, liberals and conservatives. What are your thoughts about that?
Well, that's a wide-open question. That's interesting, because I don't approach being on the board in a partisan way. It's not a partisan election. But also, I find that even if you don't label yourself a certain way, people will label you, 'cause we're, there are many other things in politics that are partisan. I think that people can have diverse views, even if they're, like, even if you were to label them the same. So, to me, it's more, I think people are capable of having diversity of opinion based on their experiences in life. And the most important part to me is not whether you lean right or left or in the middle, but how we're able to hold conversation. There are many people in my life who are conservative or liberal, but who I'm able to have a back-and-forth conversation about just depends on the person, and if you, and if you want to have that kind of dialogue. So to me, it's a little bit less about if someone is liberal or conservative, and it's more about what are your experiences in education? What are your experiences in business or other boards? What are your experiences being around groups of different people? That's especially important to me, because I'm one of two, hi dad, people in this room who are very different than everybody else. So that's important, that's the most important thing to me, is how have you developed your perspective based on interacting with other people, and how are you able to communicate?
Thank you, Dominique Stewart. Rachel Henderson? If you'd like me to read the question over, I will.
I think I'm okay. In my experience, both on the Menominee School Board and in other types of board work and leadership positions, I think the qualities that make a good board member are a commitment to good governance, an ability and a commitment to learning what we need to learn, to learning finance, to read financial statements, to learning to, to navigate and to write and update our policy, and to be able to come to the table, to have a good-faith discussion, to reason together with your fellow board members, and to put in the time. Our, our school board and our local, you know, local government at various levels, at county, at city council, they're not partisan in elections for a reason. I think the question of whether we need one party or another to be on one of these boards, to me, is less important than what are the candidates bringing to the table, and what is their commitment to doing the work that is required of a good board member.
Thank you, Rachel Henderson. Joyce Uller?
Well, I think it, it does matter. I think it matters tremendously. There isn't a single conservative voice on the board right now, and it shows. And, you know, people voted for that, they voted for that, and that's a thing. The reconsideration committee that Josie brought that book to, now that was, I think, an appointed committee, and there's nobody on that committee at all that represented any kind of a conservative point of view on that. And that's a little more problematic, but, you know, it does matter. And then, last November, the board talked about shutting down public comment, okay? And so you started with an echo chamber, and you moved to lock the door. And that's really why I'm running for school board, because the only way, the conservatives in the community, and there are many, I mean, it may not be representative in this particular room, but, you know, this community is much more evenly split, and, and so we don't feel that we are being heard. Amen.
Thank you, Joyce. Abe Smith?
So I, I think the core thing here is, and Rachel alluded to this and said it very well, that the role of a board member is to serve the mission of the institution that they're serving on the board of. And in the case of something like a school board, where it is, you know, covering everyone, the most important thing is not so much your individual viewpoint, and it's great to have diversity of views on the board, of course, but what's even more important is the willingness to go out into the community and draw in ideas and experiences that you have not personally had, and, again, synthesize them into an understanding of what people need. You're never gonna have nine people represent tens of thousands, that's never going to happen, in the sense of, like, really having every single viewpoint, you know, represented on the board of nine people. But what you can do is have nine people who are willing to spend, you know, their nights and weekends, talking with as many people as they can in the community to understand what their concerns are, whether those are positive or negative, whatever, you know, whatever it means to them personally, and to bring that back to the board for discussion and contemplation. I do wanna make a very brief comment about the reference to shutting down public comment, 'cause it is directly relevant to this. Last fall, the board was trying to find a way to be more thorough in understanding what the community's viewpoints were, because the concern was that at board meetings on a Monday night from 5:45 to 8:00 p.m., only a handful of people can carve that out of their life to come to this meeting at the same time every month. So the question was, can we pause that for a while and find new ways to get community input? So there's, I don't think it's accuracy we're trying to shut down community comment, we're trying to find expansive ways to bring in more community comment, and the question is how.
Okay, I can't see you, Abe, but I think that's the end of, yeah, okay. Thank you, Abe Smith. Josie Pillman?
So do we need different viewpoints on the school board? I would say yes, and, but I agree with Joyce. Right now, there is not any conservative viewpoint on the board, but that's, but what do you do about it? It's our own, it's our own problem, because there's not a representation of conservatives there, because the conservatives haven't been involved in the process. You're not gonna get a conservative voice on there if you're not willing to run and get your voice on there. I think it's really important that there be that. And that was partly what was alarming to me, when this reconsideration committee that was set up was completely all liberals. I didn't feel like the conservative view was represented even with one vote. So that's not the school board, it's a different committee, but it was an appointed board by the board or the, or the process. So I think it is, it's insightful for us as a community to say, where are the conservatives? Aren't they even concerned about the children? I mean, I'm a homeschooler, I wouldn't put my kids into public school because of some of these very liberal teachings that are there, but that doesn't mean I care about, I don't care about the children in our community. And I think that we need to care about them enough to at least have a voice and to say. Three minutes on a, on a night at a school board meeting doesn't, isn't loud enough, it doesn't change anything, you're just flicked away. So the answer, the way I see it, is that the more conservative community members of the community that care about the schools, that care about the board, need to be more involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Josie Pillman. I think we have time for one more question, and then the candidates will do their closing statement. And when they, when they do that, we're gonna come, start at the far end and move this way, just for to mix things up a bit. So one more question.
She's saying that she's starting with me now? No.
Okay. This is a vision question. What are your thoughts on the possible elimination of the Federal Department of Education? And how will this affect your job on the Menominee School Board?
Are you starting with me?
I'm afraid so.
Okay. I have to admit that I am not, I am not an expert in understanding the federal departments, and I don't think I have a full grasp on what the elimination of the Department of Education at federal level would mean. It terrifies me. I think that, I think that we have a system right now, right, where there is a Federal Department of Education that puts one set of parameters around what public schools in our country must do and must not do. And then, at the state level, we have our Department of Public Instruction that does quite a bit more detail. And I think that that system is right. And I think that we have a lot of opportunity at every single state for the And I think that we have a lot of opportunity at every single state for the State Department of whatever, in Wisconsin Public Instruction, Department of Education, to set policy and make laws for their state, and that within the parameters of, you know, the much looser parameters of the federal level. I think that system's right, but, and I also think that even if that system needs to be tweaked, simply deleting the department could, will probably create chaos. So I guess the real question is, as a board member, you know, I do not know what exactly will be incumbent on us or how it would impact our work, but I imagine it will be confusing and difficult. And I'm really worried, very finally, about what that means for our federal funding. We receive money through, it's not the biggest part of our, of our funding, but we do get money from federal grants and from the federal title programs. Those live within the Department of Education, and I think beyond the confusion and chaos that the elimination of the department would create, what happens to that money? Does it still go to schools somehow, is a really big concern for me.
Thank you Rachel Henderson. By the way, I'm repeating these names because in my past, when I see a voting piece of paper, I go, am I remembering the names correctly? And if I keep repeating them to you, you will be remembering the names correctly. Joyce Euler.
Yeah. I like what you said, Rachel. I, I think that chaos is likely for a lot of reasons for a little while. It's, I think it's going to get messy, and I don't know where that's going. The thing about getting rid of the federal Education Department is that the responsibility is being sent to the state, and my personal opinion is that, I'm not sure, the state Department of Education is really our friend very much. I mean, I think if you look at the struggles we've had for funding here, and if you look at a lot of mandates that are put on the school boards, that, you know, are really, I think, a struggle to, to make happen. And, and these testing, you know, I'm complaining about these tests and accusing you people. I'm like, hey, you know, only 40% of people can do this. Those are state tests, and that's happening all over the state. It's actually happening all over the country. That 40% is not the SDMA. That's nationwide. And the state, so anyway, giving them more power, I'm not sure. I like local control as much as possible. Thank you.
Abe Smith.
I think the key thing, thinking about the possible dissolution of the Education Department at the federal level, is that we don't know what that means yet. You know, to be blunt, like, the, you know, we all, the, the board members have taken an oath to the US Constitution, the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin. We've, we have, you know, we are bound to follow the laws of our country and of our state, and the amount of local control we have is clearly regulated within those bounds. And the statements being made out of Washington DC about how departments might end up or be dissolved or be rearranged, I think that is going to be a months or years-long process of confusion and litigation. What I do know is that the, that the school board, its members, the administration, and the teachers are all very much tuned in to all the legal bulletins coming out every day and every week from the various organizations that we follow. I know that the district has access to very good legal counsel to figure out what the law actually is, and to be sure that we're following it appropriately, and aren't being swayed this way or that way by what's in the news. Ultimately, you know, laws come from Congress and the courts and a deliberative process, and through appropriate, careful, thoughtful governance, we can navigate it together.
Thank you Abe Smith. Josie Pillman, what are your thoughts on this?
I like, I'm interested in some of what I've heard. I am all about local, local control. So I recognize that obviously this is going to be chaos, because our whole budget here in Menominee has been set according to funds received both federally and from the state, well, and then also from the local money that we receive. So it's going to mean a change. And I'm, I'm not sad about that, because I'm not for federal governing from up there. I don't, I don't think they need to be involved in our local schools. And I'm, you know, I'm okay, a lot better with state, but I'm still looking at all the restrictions that come along with the money. If they're giving us money, they're giving us, telling us how we have to do this or do that. So the more local we can get, the better. But I totally agree that it's going to be chaos and confusion. And I will say that the board and the administration, I think, has done a really good job of trying to figure it out, because they've got their budget built on having certain money coming. They're going to have to figure it out, or we have to figure it out if I'm on the board.
Thank you Josie Pillman. Dominique Stewart.
In preparation for this forum, I thought the topic of the Department of Ed would come up, and my first bullet point is very weird, all weird. Future is very unclear. In certain situations, like if I were prepping a music recital or something, I like the phrase panic early, because in that situation, all of the elements of me to get ready for that thing are within my control, and so it makes sense to panic early, because then you're more likely to be prepared. In this situation, there are so many elements outside of our control, outside of my control as a board member. And so in terms of action, of like what to do right now, that part is very murky. On the horizon, I am concerned about our title funds, which come from the federal government, which would impact several of our schools. But it's, we have to, we're kind of in a wait-and-see moment, and what we can do is continue to provide the best leadership that we can. Our district has been very proactive in talking with different people at education conferences. I think our district is proactive in setting policies and procedures that will help us to be the most stable we can be as the federal level kind of potentially goes away or goes crazy. So I feel like we are in as good of a place as we can be, and we kind of have to wait and see what happens at the federal level.
Thank you Dominique Stewart. Okay, now they are going to begin presenting you with their closing statements, and we will start with Josie Pillman.
So in order to achieve academic excellence in our schools, we must begin with character and high morals. This begins with understanding that all human beings are born bad, as I've already mentioned, and need to be taught to be good. If we get that wrong, we're on a, we're not on solid footing for teaching little children or big children. And I'm sure our elementary teachers work very hard to train our students that they must obey authority, follow the playground rules, take turns at the water fountain, treat their friends as they want to be treated, not to lie, et cetera, et cetera. The policies in our schools need to allow teachers with a moral compass to be released to teach values according to their conscience, and I don't see that happening right now. I see their hands being tied. Our policies must reflect truth. I call this reclaiming the rainbow. Students must know that rainbows reflect the training and discipline of our Creator, that He would never again destroy the earth with a flood. Making rainbows message anything else is a lie, and I saw that in NAF Elementary School. Lies. Once the children know they can trust their teachers in this area, they also know they can trust them in reading, writing, and arithmetic. So now I'm going to get really specific, reading. I'm a believer in the phonics method of teaching reading. It doesn't work for every child, but it is a useful tool for many or most. Writing, I'm a believer in teaching cursive after the children have learned to print. Cursive teaches, develops another skill. It also helps the children know how to read Grandma's notes or writings of people of the past. Arithmetic, I'm a proponent of old math. Children learn by building line upon line. They need to learn the numbers first, then move to adding, subtracting, division, and multiplication before moving on to more advanced math. I do not know what new math is, but I hear from some parents that they cannot help their children with it as they do not know how it works. I believe we should return to the old ways that have worked so well. So if elected, I desire to a little more digging into curriculum and textbook choices with the goal of academic and character excellence. Reclaimed rainbows, reading, writing, and arithmetic. Thank you.
Thank you Josie Pillman. Abe Smith.
Public education has never been easy. Budgets are always tight. Students' needs are always evolving with the times and the challenges, and it's always been true that many crucial positions are understaffed, and there's more we'd like to do. On top of this, right now, we are in a moment of tension and uncertainty, as we were just talking about, and unfortunately, often the whole idea of inclusive public schools is sometimes under attack. The way through this tension is to focus on solving real problems for real people and rebuilding trust through communication with our neighbors. There's lots of topics we could have talked about tonight that we didn't, and I think it's worth mentioning some of them. These are the real challenges our district is facing. Act 20 on reading was deployed across the state of Wisconsin last year. It's a, actually, there's a lot of great things in there about teaching, reading in a, in a really thorough way based on phonics and similar methods. Menominee's been at the forefront of that. We've had a really good training intervention on reading, and we've deployed that across the entire district. Again, it's all hands-on-deck approach. We're facing a strategic planning process to figure out what do the next five years look like for our priorities. We have a very serious budget problem to figure out, and every day, we all think about where do we cut or how can we solve this? We have been forced by that budget situation to cut back on investments in our facilities. Historically, the district has put money into future developments for a 30-year plan of maintaining these facilities, making sure we replace, you know, the lights and the heaters and the roof and all these things on a timeline that makes sense. We've, because of the budget situation, we've been forced to cut off those payments, and now are looking at not having enough money to cover facilities in just a couple of years. We are looking at a teacher shortage in, across the state of Wisconsin, and in particular in western Wisconsin, and how do we keep hiring great staff with limited resources when we want to offer great competitive salaries and good benefits so we have the best teachers available for our students? How do we get them? When we talk about improving student outcomes, you can't just go to Amazon and buy student outcomes, right? You get them by hiring a great teacher and empowering them to do the work on a daily basis. And that's what we spend our time trying to figure out how to do. So there are real detailed challenges we have to face and solve, and we solve them together as a community. That's what I believe.
Thank you Abe Smith. Joyce Euler.
As I conclude tonight, I want to leave you with a critical issue that demands attention. Last year, I raised concerns about the book, this book is gay by Juno Dawson, being available in our school libraries. The book includes very sexually explicit content, such as direct instructions on how to use sex apps to meet strangers near you, which I find deeply troubling. Dr. Zdowski assured me that even though the book is recommended for students age 13 and up, that in the SDMA, students must be at least 14 to check it out. To my knowledge, there is no parental permission or notification currently required. The content of this book is so graphic that reading it allowed to a minor could be considered a felony. It is the equivalent of watching an NC-17 movie. I would invite you to read a report I presented to the board on this subject by going to The current school board's approach to these issues is concerning. We shouldn't ignore serious concerns in order to maintain happy, sunshiny board meetings. Problems, no matter how big, can be solved if we're willing to discuss them openly. We need to open up communication channels and foster a more honest culture in the school district. Only then will the school board earn the trust of the community, and perhaps then they can successfully pass a referendum. Menominee is a community that values transparency and accountability, and it's time our school board reflects those values. I want to be a part of that solution. Let me repeat, we must address these issues head-on. As someone who is committed to your voice being heard, I ask for your support. Put me in, coach. Please vote for me, Joyce Euler, on April 1st. Joyce is your voice. Thank you.
Thank you Joyce Euler. Rachel Henderson.
Yeah, so first of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for making this happen. Thanks for all of your time and effort, Ellen and Steve, and thanks to everybody for being here tonight and to everyone who contributed questions. I'm incredibly proud to be part of the Menominee School District. When my first, when my oldest child started school, I was just blown away by the wonderful things that I saw there and what was happening. And at that point, I decided to start getting involved with our PTO, to start volunteering there. And three years ago, I decided to run for school board because I felt that the experience that I had, the experience I had in board governance and nonprofit work, and in financial, you know, having a sense of financial documents, was something I could bring to this district that I care so much about. And every month at our school board meetings, there's something that amazes me. You know, one thing that didn't come up earlier, but we had the opportunity this year after our state report cards came out to sit and do a deep dive with our curriculum team, and I was so amazed at the way that they were taking these, these test scores and using them as a tool, and taking a look at, like, this is showing us where we need to put our effort, and where we need to put our effort is in making, you know, bringing these kids up to speed, and to take that information and use it productively. And I think about that with the role of our school boards, right? Like, we have limited resources, and we have a lot of things and a lot of challenges we have to tackle. I really appreciate the way Abe laid them all out, so I'm not going to repeat that. I think the board that we, what we need from our school board right now is the ability to align our resources with the challenges that are ahead of us. Right now, we have a really collaborative board, and we are able to reason together. We're able to take on difficult questions. We're able to have difficult conversations with each other. We disagree on a lot of things, and we're able to talk about those things, and we're able to come up with creative solutions, and I have a lot of confidence in our ability to take that on together. I feel really great about the work that our board has done over the last three years, and I feel that I can continue to be a strong leader and to be able to bring a lot to that board. So I want to thank everybody who has been able to participate, and I look forward to serving for another three years.
Thank you Rachel Henderson. Dominique Stewart.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, and thank you everyone for coming and being here to listen to us. This would be much less fun with two people in the audience, even though my parents would be supportive. For my own sake, someone may have caught in my opening, I made up a word, productive, and I'm, I'm just telling you, I know it's productive. For me, being a board member means being collaborative, means working with all eight members. It means accepting the will of the board, even if the board's decision is different than your vote, which is not always easy, but it's so incredibly necessary. It means knowing the separation of duties between a board member and someone who is on the administrative staff of a district. And it means supporting all students, whatever religion they do or do not have. It also, this one's tough. It also means accepting when a referendum passes or fails, and being okay with that answer, whatever it is, because the referendum is a question. It's a choice, and we take that answer, and we work from there. And I think that we, as a board, have worked hard to move forward from that decision. And I think that we, as a board, have worked hard to move forward from that decision. As a board member, I have worked hard to improve my own self and to be effective. I consider myself a lifelong student. And I have served as clerk. I've served as our Wisconsin Association of School Board delegate. I have attended the State Education Convention, the WASBE Day of Action, and also listening sessions in our district, in our community. Because, as I mentioned earlier, I believe that me getting better as an advocate is listening and learning from the people that I'm serving. I am willing to communicate directly on the board and say things that I think are true, but are maybe hard to say, and that's okay. And I'm also willing to change my, change my perspective if I'm presented with new information. One of my favorite things being on the board is specifically disagreeing with Abe, because I know there's a really good chance he's going to have a lot of information that might change my mind. We don't always agree, regardless of our background, regardless of what we're labeled as liberal or conservative. We don't always agree, but we always work to be respectful in our communications. I'm very proud of that. I think it would be a real win for Menominee to continue the same leadership and not have to onboard new members, and to be able to build on what we have. And so, that's why I will, I hope you will elect me again for school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dominique Stewart. Now, I want all of you in the audience to give some applause to these people that that have put themselves out here for you, so you get to meet them in this situation. And now, I would like you to give some applause to the people who came tonight. Because you wanted to find out, and you care. That's awesome. I think we'll call this meeting closed, but you certainly have an opportunity to at least shake hands with candidates as they...
Yes.
We have been doing these school board forums for several years now, and I really appreciate the quality of the people who come to them. I'm sorry, we didn't get all the questions answered.
Sure, of course.